Good evening and welcome to the City of Bayonne Regular Planning Board Meeting for the month of October. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chairperson Fiamonte?
Here.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Here.
Mayor Davis is absent. Commissioner Valoz?
Here.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Mayorano is absent. Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Scheible is absent and Commissioner Lubach is absent. We have a quorum. We can proceed.
Okay, thank you. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have the statement with regard to the Open Public Meetings Act Sunshine Law. This regular meeting of the City of Bayonne Planning Board has complied with the Open Public Meetings Act Sunshine Law. Annual notices of the schedule of regular meetings were published in both the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger newspaper. The schedule of regular meetings for calendar year 2025 is filed with the City Clerk's Office. A copy of the agenda of tonight's meeting is posted on the bulletin board, in the lobby of Municipal Building, and on the City of Bayonne website. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting held on September... Yes? Okay, so that is not on our agenda. We will forego the minutes and we'll move to the very lengthy communications section.
Yes, Madam Chair. The first communication is from Peter Wolfson and it's dated September 9th, 2025 requesting an extension for Woodmont Bayonne Phase Two Urban Renewal LLC. And that would be through September 13th, 2026. Can I get a motion in a second to approve that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
The next communication is from Donald M. Pepe and Esquire and that's dated September 4th requesting a one-year extension of BCP LLC Site 2nd Street Right of Way off of Avenue A through and including October. And this would be through October 28th, 2026. It is P-20-022. Can I get a motion in a second to approve that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote?
On the vote, Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
The next communication is also from Mr. Pepe and that's dated September 15th, 2025 requesting a one-year extension for BCP LLC Site 796 through 798-804 Avenue A and City Block 393, lots 19 and 20. And that would be through October 28th, 2026. The application number is P-20-023. Can I get a motion in a second to approve that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
That was approved. Next is a communication from Paul Weeks dated July 23rd, 2025 requesting an extension for BHA Oak Street Development. The site is 7 Oak Street, site is 7 Oak Court West in City Block 471, lots 1 through 7. And that would be through August 9th, 2026. And it's number P-22-020. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote?
Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
The next is a communication from Peter Cecchinini dated September 15th, 2026 requesting a six-month adjournment of the current hearing date for P-25-023 Emerald Valley Holdings. The site is 261 Broadway, City Block 272, lots 22 and 23, in which they're going to submit amended plans and get a new hearing date in the future. Application will renotice, applicant will renotice at that time. No further action is required on the part of the Board at this time.
Okay.
Going back to the agenda now. Let's see. The next is Municipal Council Resolution authorizing and directing the planning Board to prepare a redevelopment plan for certain property located at 508 Avenue A, 510-514 Avenue A, and 134-136 West 22nd Street in City Block 208, lots 1.01, 4 and 35 on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. That's known as P-24-019. That requires no action on the part of the Board at the present time. Next is Municipal Council Resolution authorizing and directing the planning Board to prepare a redevelopment plan for certain property located at 653-657 Avenue A, 47 East 41st Street, and 659 Avenue A and City Block 98, lots 13 and 14 on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. That's known as P-24-020. That requires no further action on the part of the Board at the present time. Next is Municipal Council Resolution authorizing and directing the planning Board to prepare a redevelopment plan for certain property located at 15-23 East 33rd Street in City Block 140, lots 34, 5.01 and 5.02 on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. This application is known as P-25-025. And next is Municipal Council Resolution authorizing and directing the planning Board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether properties located at 485 Avenue A, Avenue C, 487-493 Avenue C, and 64-66 West 22nd Street in City Block 209, lots 22, 23.01, and 27 constitute a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. This is also known as P-25-030. No further action required on the part of the Board.
Okay. Do we have any other communications that were...
That's it on communications.
Okay.
Next is the site, P-25-013. That's the City of Bayonne making an application to the Minor Subdivision Subcommittee seeking approval of a subdivision of Block 404 and portions of Lot 2.05 and Block 930, Lot 1.01, and Block 970, Lot 1. This is for informational purposes. The Minor Subdivision Subcommittee voted in favor of authorizing this subdivision of this property, being that it's going to the city and it's by the property owner as well as the city, namely the Port Authority. This is for informational purposes only.
Okay.
Okay?
Noted. Thank you.
Next is public hearing, P-25-024. Presentation of an amendment to the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor, Harbor Station North Redevelopment Plan for Property Located at City Block 660.01 Lot 1 as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. This matter will be carried to November 3rd, 2025, so it won't be heard tonight. Can I get a motion in a second to carry this matter without further notice?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Next is the presentation of a non-condemnation here area in need of redevelopment, P-25-017, for property located at 104-108 West 7th Street in City Block 314, lots 44.01, to develop a map reflecting the boundaries of the proposed non-condemnation redevelopment area and as to determine whether said property constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, also known as barren roofing. This will be carried to December 9th, 2025. Can I get a motion in a second to do so?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote?
And that is without further notice on the part of the applicant. Chairperson Fiamonte?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is item number nine. That is P-25-030. Presentation of a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment study for property located at 485 Avenue C, 487-493 Avenue C, and 64-66 West 22nd Street in City Block 209, Lot 22, 23.01, and 27, to develop a map reflecting the boundaries of the proposed non-condemnation redevelopment area and to determine whether said property constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Presentation by Ron Reinertson.
You got it.
I just want you to get up there and start talking because I'm tired.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Ron Reinertson from CME, just to basically just go over briefly the area in need of redevelopment study. And as council already read, we had the resolution to authorize you to do it, so I worked very quickly and got it done in five minutes. No, we didn't, but anyway, let's just go over this. It's the Russell Auto Bodies facility. It's officially Block 209, lots 22, 23, 01, and 27. Most of the properties used for the auto body, Vital Signs, which is a sign company, obviously the name says it all, is in the front of Lot 20, front of the building in Lot 22, which is 485 Avenue C. So that is basically, our conclusions are on pages 23 and 24. I'll get to that in a little bit, but I just don't want to bury the lead. And as been pointed out, one of the parcels in 27 is actually not in the UEZ, but the rest of the facility, which acts as one, is in the urban development area. So we'll discuss, you know, what we have to do on criteria G, but all parcels meet criteria H because it's within a planning area A. I also just said 2301 may be considered to meet criteria D. We'll discuss a little more briefly at the end. Redevelopment procedures are set forth in the local redevelopment and housing law, the LRHL. The statutory criteria, just want to point out that it's listed on page 23 and 24. I'm not going to read it, but the stress is if it meets any one of the conditions, it can be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. So it's not like we need four or five. We're not putting proofs on the record of, so it just needs one. So basically, just going into similarities and differences of rehabilitation versus redevelopment. The rehabilitation, the whole city is noted within the plan, has been designated an area in need of rehabilitation. So similarities is that you can, redevelopment plans can be adopted by council under both. There's no deline, there's no differences in creating redevelopment plan. Now, the differences are it's different criteria and also just briefly tax incentives under rehabilitation. It's only five years versus 30 years for redevelopment. So the study was conducted under the Resolution 2509-17053, which was read into the record just about 15 minutes ago, authorizing the planning Board to undertake this investigation. It's a non-condemnation study. It's non-condemnation study. Study area is bounded by Avenue C, West 22nd Street, consists of three lots under common ownership within Block 209. So just briefly, I just described the redevelopment process within our report. It's on pages two to three. Council authorizes the planning Board by resolution, which I just mentioned, to undertake the investigation. Best practices are you usually have firms that have expertise in this, such as planning firms, such as CME, to do the study on behalf of the planning Board. Duly noticed public hearing to discuss the findings is held. That's what's being held tonight. To, and I just want to reconfirm, this is a non-condemnation redevelopment area. Law was changed in 2011 that was codified, a lot of case law. I think there was one, if I remember, it's DeRose versus Harrison, which the courts say you have to make clear whether or not it's, for the public, to the public, whether it's condemnation or non-condemnation, or specifically to the landlords themselves. The results and recommendations of this hearing are then referred to City Council in the form of a planning Board resolution for formal action. Upon receipt of the recommendation from the planning Board, the council may act to adopt a resolution designated in the study area, any part thereof, as an area in need of redevelopment. It's up to council. So basically, I've got some background in Section 3. We discussed the study area delineation and descriptions. Just want to point out, you know, sometimes people say, well, why do you put all this in here? It actually was described in a court case, Irritac versus Perth Amboy. I know the planner well, Eileen Benira, who I consider a mentor, and she had described certain aspects of it, looking for public records, looking at tax records, mapping and such, just to build a record. So in that, to this day, is what most of these reports are based upon. So basically, I just, you know, I would say that conditions were observed and photographed during a site visit last Tuesday, in fact, it's on the 7th. And all are addressed in the reports, in the study area description on page 3, zoning classifications, the surrounding land uses, there's an improvement to land evaluation. I normally just put this in as a reference. It's sometimes associated with criteria E, which we're not going to go into tonight, but I just have that standard in my report. Two of the study area parcels, Lot 22 and 2301, has an improvement to land evaluation less than 1.1. One of them is due because it's basically a parking lot. Municipal call records, I would just say, we did request these and you heard this tight turnaround time. As of when we did this report and sent it over to City, we did not have it except for tax records, which are up to date. I received the police reports on Monday. I have these for the record. These are in my hand. I reviewed these police records. I can just say, most of them are just minor reports and such. I think there was one assault in five years and it had to do with someone who was angry that their car was not at Russell Auto Body and it was someplace else and they had to call the police. There's really no reflection that would affect one way or the other of findings. Environmental conditions, there is a New Jersey EMS site ID for 2301. Most of it is related to the operation of the auto body shop. It's called a right to know. It's a self-reporting item. I found out while I was doing another report on service stations. They have to report hazardous materials to the state just to make sure their workers are safe. And that's what all that is all about. Wetlands and flood data are on page 13. There are none. The state planning classification area, it's a metropolitan area, PA 1, the maps are on page 14. And finally, the urban enterprise zone is mentioned. Most of this parcel, again, is within the urban enterprise zone. The building itself is not. It's outside and we would have to verify if that's an accurate thing, but that's what our GIS records show. Page 16 and 17 has the statutory criteria A to H in Section 3. I'm not going to read them into the record. So I just want to get into application of statutory criteria. Basically, we've got criteria D, which is areas of buildings which are improvements by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light, and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, a deleterious land use, obsolete layout, or any combination of these or other factors detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. And it's a mouthful. Basically, two out of the three lots, or the parcels I examined, inside and out. It's a very neat facility. This particular lot is the parking lot. It does have a lot of impervious coverage, which could lead to runoff. And there has been, obviously, we've just gone through rain events. We see what happens with runoff. But for the most part, I would just say that, you know, we would go on to criteria G, which two of the parcels are in. It's in any municipality which an enterprise zone has been designated pursuant to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Act, shall be considered sufficient for the determination that the area is in need of redevelopment. Now, we can use this criteria because this is a non-condemnation study. It's clear at the end, to use criteria D, you cannot use eminent domain. That's not on the table here. So two out of the three parcels could be, and we could also make the case that they actually all function as one, so the majority of this study area is in an urban enterprise zone. And then finally, the designation of the criteria H, the designation of delineated area is consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law regulation. I do go into the description on criteria H. That was added later to the redevelopment law. It's sort of weird. It's a chicken or egg thing. It says it has to, so it has to encourage smart growth principles, but we don't know until we have a plan. And that's not what's before us here. But I would just say, it would meet criteria H if, if what the future development is, is encourages smart growth, smart growth development. And considering all the transportation and such in the municipality and how the other redevelopment projects have gone, I would say that it is a rational assumption and that will happen here. So just to conclude, on Table 3 on page 24 has our conclusions. I just will open it up for some questions. I will say this, there are some typographical errors regarding block and lots, and I'm very particular about that, and I'm a little embarrassed that it was there, but we will fix that. And it also was a numbering system, which I had, our word was fixed today. For some reason, it wasn't linking to the prior section, so they will be fixed before going to council because I certainly would not want my name on a report that has mistakes like that. And we will try to incorporate as much as the municipal reports that we got into the report. So with that, I'll just, I don't get paid by the word, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. I am just looking at the permitted uses. Normally, looking back at a recent redevelopment plan or area in need of redevelopment study, we typically list out what's permitted and then kind of say, if it's not listed explicitly as permitted, then it's not permitted. And in this case, I noticed that under permitted uses, it's saying, accept that the following are not permitted. Thrift stores, secondhand stores, pawn, consignment shops, shops which offer sale of firearms and ammunition, which I'm obviously for banning these things. But I'm just wondering, are we leaving ourselves open to other types of stores that we wouldn't necessarily want by not just using the verbiage that says, you know, was there a reason that this language was used as opposed to saying, you know, if it's not listed, it's not permitted?
Fair question. This is taken directly from your code.
Okay. I'm just asking because I...
No edits. We just put it in there, just the formatting, to make sure that it's consistent. In fact, all the lettering is exactly like the code has.
Okay.
So, you know, that's a good point, but maybe that's something that to be looked into, the ordinance itself. But just in reference, a lot of times, area needs studies don't even have this listed. I commonly do, because when you think about it, we're not talking about the underlying zone. We're really just seeing if it meets the criteria, but it's a common practice we put in here. Another thing that a lot of times I don't even include anymore is master plan sections. That's important for a redevelopment plan, but the study itself is not, it doesn't rise or fall on what's in the master plan.
Okay. So then, we're just basically saying, you know, when we come back with the study, when we come back with the actual plan, we'll firm up the language to any, to make sure we don't lend itself to, you know, vape shops across the street from one another and, you know, things like that.
In general, I think that redevelopment plans, I mean, is a balance, but you certainly don't want loose language in there. I think you want to pretty much have an idea on what you want there.
Absolutely. Okay. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to put that out there for the record since it was not something we commonly say. Commissioners, any questions? Sure. Commissioner Locke?
Yes, hi.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? I just wanted to ask about what the rationale was for criteria G for Lot 27.
Well, criteria G, as I pointed out, that criteria G is for anything urban enterprise zones. I would just have to say that if we were going to go strictly by that, that if it's loc, if that particular parcel, based on our mapping, is not there, so we have to, I'll have to amend that. You know, just put on the record that it is not, according to those maps, in there. But this whole, this whole parcel in itself, when you think about it, the Russell, the Russell Auto Body Shop functions with really all three lots. So, you know, if you want to say it's under common ownership, and in fact, there's options. You can, you can study a study area as one whole parcel or within, but factually, it's not an urban enterprise zone. Quite frankly, it's an oversight. So, I mean, I think for that particular parcel, if we're going to go strictly by the tax lot, it's only criteria H. But as I pointed out, though, this is the interesting fact here, that you could still do a redevelopment plan if that was not designated. Here's what would happen, is that that one would still be an area in need of rehabilitation that's designated back from 1998, and you can create a plan. So in theory, that particular part of the parcel would not be eligible for the more enhanced tax incentives that you have for an area of redevelopment. You can only do five years versus 30. So I don't know how you'd break that out. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not even going to opine on that. But really, that is, you know, when you think about it, rehabilitation is five years. A lot of times, the intent is, say, an older home or something, you want to rehabilitate, so you only do five years. Redevelopment, it's much, usually a much bigger project, so 30 years is, is really, it's a carrot and stick item when you think about it, to incentivize to re, redevelop. So, make the long story short, you could, it's your choice. I mean, I would go on the record right now and to say, if you want to say that it's just a standalone lot, it does not meet criteria G. It's not in the UEZ. And I will change our report to reflect that.
Any other commissioners? All right. Start down the end. Ms. Mack? Any questions?
Yes, just a couple of comments. And thank you, Ron. Very comprehensive. I kind of want to follow up on what the Chair had said about the, and again, this is your first presentation on this, so I appreciate all the effort you put into it. Normally, we have a map that lays out what the zoning is, and this is really the first time in a long time we've seen the actual uses. So as, as you said, it's really a matter that will be picked up in your redevelopment plan work. So, you know, I concur with the Chair on that. I just wanted to clarify that you said that you will be submitting a new report to, to Alicia that, that will cover the UEZ issue and the, there were a couple of blocks and lots that I think you and I both concur that...
Concur, yes.
They need, it's on page 18, but you know, you said that you will...
An appendix A.
Yeah.
A header on appendix A.
Yeah. It wasn't your intention, it's just, it's just a typo.
Just a typo or format.
So, as I said before, thank you for the good effort and if, look forward to you resubmitting something to her.
Certainly. And again, just to go on the record, from what I have, from the police reports and stuff, it would not affect our findings either way. I mean, most of these, there's just no, no pattern from what I can see in these reports that this is detrimental, this, you know, it's harmful to the community. I mean, I think, I'm not a resident of the city, but I think the auto body shop, again, it's one of the neatest auto body shops I've ever seen. I, unfortunately, had my car fixed, and it was a pretty neat shop, but this place puts in the shame. I mean, they really, it's, it's very well maintained and kept.
Thank you.
Mr. Eisenstein, quick question. For the lot that you questioned whether or not it was in a UEZ zone, is there any other criteria, if the UEZ zone criteria didn't apply to it, that would apply to that lot specifically?
Criteria H, which is that it's, it's, it's in a smart growth. Now, you know, again, I put, a lot, you know, I've heard practitioners say, well, it's, because it was added on after, and then there's certain questions about constitutionality and such, but it's still in the law. It still meets criteria H. There's also the donut in the hole, which was, and I didn't go into, which is, was it? was it section, section three, usually, like, just say you have a redevelopment area of four or five parcels, and you got one right in the middle, and that one doesn't meet it, in and of itself, it doesn't meet it, you could just say, it's still needed to effectuate the redevelopment of the area as a whole. I think that would be kind of tough to make an argument about that one.
Well, that's the, that was the point I was going to bring up, that you, in fact, can include lots that don't meet the criteria
Correct.
If you need it for the effective realization of redevelopment
Yeah.
Plan.
Now
In other words, and that's to stop holdouts from bringing together and having a comprehensive redevelopment plan. And as you noted in your testimony, it's a lot that's effectively part and parcel of the tract that you're examining. So I think the board could find, easily find, that lot is necessary for the effective redevelopment area to be able to bring about an effective redevelopment plan, and hence should be counted as part of the redevelopment area.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's commonly the donut in the hole, but like you said, it, it's effectively been part of this one whole parcel, so to leave this little sliver off, it's almost, so let me just read into the record what that criteria is.
Okay.
And it did, okay, so the, a redevelopment area may include lanes, buildings or improvements, which themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. This is coming from page 17. But the inclusion of which is found necessary with or without change to their condition for the effective redevelopment of the area on which they are a part. This is known as section three of the redevelopment criteria. So, you know, look, there's flexibility, and I think this, that's why I said, this is an unusual situation here, that you have
Yeah, we just wanted the belts and suspenders protection on that one, so
I would say that, you know, as I said, and you, you could be justified in that, because again, it's looking at the history of the lot, looking at the history of the parcel. Really, these three parcels function as one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions down the end there? All right, thank you. At this time, we'll move to any members of the public that have a question regarding this testimony. If anyone wishes to come forward. Okay, seeing none, if there are any members of the audience that wish to make a statement regarding Mr. Reinerstein's testimony, now would be the time. Okay, Mr. Reinerstein, I don't know if you had any other words that you wanted to share?
As always, I would thank you for having me, and I'll go take a seat here, and I don't know if that's flattery that the public didn't comment on, but I'll take it.
All right, thank you.
And pretty soon, we'll get your name right.
Yeah.
It is Reinerstein. I was even going to call the chair.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we've all heard the testimony. Anyone wish to make a comment before we move to a motion? Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And on the vote, please?
Chairperson Fremonti.
Aye.
Com, uh, Vice Chair Valardo.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Approved.
All right, and I believe we have a public hearing.
Number 10. P-25-022, Abakaris Realty LLC. The site is 9-11 Skylar Place, block 289, lot 5. The applicant is seeking approval to demolish the existing one-family dwelling, a minor subdivision to create three new lots, and to construct three new two-family dwellings on each lot. Variances are sought for stories and lot width. Is Mr. Chechenini in the room?
I don't see him.
Okay.
Interesting.
I'll go check.
Okay.
We're going to take a short break to give you a chance to retrieve him and for him to get set up.
We will call the meeting back to order.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Do you want to take a roll call?
That's what I was going to do. You said yes so fast, I thought you were checking in. Chairperson Fremonti.
Here.
Vice Chair Valardo.
Here.
Commissioner Valoz.
Here.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Locke, here. Commissioner Rhodes. Mr. Chechenini, we read the, the description of your application into the record, so we're not going to do that again. We had a slight discussion, not on the record. Would you like to repeat what we talked about?
Yes, due to, I guess, an administrative error, I didn't have the planning report until just now, and the planning report makes some good points that I discussed with our architect and my client, that we want to try to address some of the points that Mr. Slough's report brought up. So we'd asked for an adjournment in order to try to improve the application and address the points in his report.
Okay. All right. We are not available on our November 3rd calendar, so that would have to go to the December 9th calendar.
Okay.
So I will take a motion from the board to adjourn this matter from tonight to December 9th, 2025.
Okay, with no further notice.
With no further notice on the part of the applicant. What that means to the audience is, this will be carried to that calendar, but before you even show up next time, just check in, have somebody check in to make sure that it's going to be prepared, because I believe Mr. Chechenini is indicating that he's going to amend his application based upon what he's seen in Mr. Slough's report. So just check in and make sure that the new plans are of record, and that he's going to be going forward like the day before or the day of, okay? So you don't come out a second time.
Okay.
Can I get a, a motion and a second to carry this matter to?
I'll, I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fremonti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
I'm sorry?
She has a question.
Hi, I just have one question for clarification. My name is Geraldine Kiefer-Neklin. I live at 15 Skylar Place.
I think we're in the
Sorry.
We're, we're kind of in the middle of a vote.
I did raise my hand. You can't see me.
Yeah, but normally, when we're in the middle of a vote, we don't, we don't stop it, but go ahead.
No, I just have a question in regards to clarification on this building, on 9-11 Skylar Place. My name is Geraldine Kiefer-Neklin. I live at 15 Skylar Place. According to the agenda for tonight, it says a one-family house. According to the certified letter I have from the law group, it says a two-family house. I don't know, what is on the tax rolls? Is it a one-family or two-family house? Because I do know for a fact that there is a one-bedroom apartment in the house, so it should be a two-family house, but what is it on the tax rolls? Is it one or two?
We're, we're a board that's autonomous and separate from the city. We don't have the records of the city when we hear these applications. That could be a reason to, to, to have it noted on the record when the application is heard, but right now, we're not hearing the application. All we're doing is adjourning it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify for myself.
You can check with the tax, you can check with the Tax Assessor's Office, and they would have that record.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
And I apologize in the middle of vote. I just seen her a question, and I did not want to cast a vote without hearing what she had to say.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, I've lost track of where we're at. Commissioner, that's right, Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
The application has been adjourned to the December 9th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, have a good evening. Resolutions?
We have a, we have a bunch of resolutions tonight, because you've done
I think the most of the work tonight.
You, you've done a lot of business tonight as well. P-21-023, extension for Woodmont Bayonne Phase 2 Urban Renewal LLC. Site is 7 West 52nd Street and City Block 37, Lot 1. Can I get a motion and a second to approve that resolution?
I'll move.
I'll second.
On the vote, Chairperson Fremonti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes. Next is P-20-022, extension for PCB LLC, site 2nd Street and Right of Way off of Avenue A. Motion and a second to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fremonti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Next is P-20-023, extension for PCB LLC, site 796 and 798-804 Avenue E and City Block 393, lots 19 and 20.
I'll move.
Second.
And on the vote, Chairperson Fremonti.
Aye.
Vice Chair Valardo.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Next is P-22-020, extension for BHA Oak Street Development, site 7 Oak Court West